Good evening all. Welcome to the City of Middletown Planning Board Meeting, July the 2nd, 2025. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get too far into the meeting, Mr. McCormick is going to swear in Ms. Dupree, our new planning board member.
Raise your right hand.
Yes.
Just repeat after me. I Yasmin Dupree.
I Yasmin Dupree.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of member of the Middletown City Planning.
Member of the Middletown City Planning Board.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Okay, great, we're gonna do a little paperwork for our transcriptionist. Those absent this evening are members are Dan Higby and from the city, Sixto Martinez and Michael Guadere, they are out this evening. And of course, present this evening is Mr. Krogan, the Planning Board Attorney. Before we go any further, you may notice that Ms. Houston is no longer a Planning Board member. I'd just like to thank her for her previous service. She spent many years on the Planning Board and I wish her luck in whatever endeavors she has decided to take on. First on our agenda this evening is the approval of the June 4th, 2024 minutes. I need a motion, Mr. Madden, I need a second, Mr. Brito, discussion. I will be abstaining this evening because I was not present at that meeting.
I will abstain.
And Ms. Witt will also be abstaining because she was not present for the meeting.
I will abstain as well.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. McCormick?
We don't have enough votes to pass the minutes if only three of us are voting.
Then we'll have to wait till next month?
Yes, thank you. Motion to table?
Motion to table. Do we need a motion, need a vote on the motion for table? Then I need a motion. Mr. Madden, Mr. Brito, second. Discussion, roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Brito?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Dupree?
Yes.
And I agree, yes. All right, moving on to the first order of business today. Bartolo Gomez Gonzalez, hurrah, oh boy. Give me that one, Mr. McCormick. Suarez? Thank you. 203 to 209 Dulson Avenue, phone retail, phone repair. Please step up to the mic, sir. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Bartolo Gonzalez Suarez.
There you go. And what do you intend on doing, sir?
We're doing a repair and cell phones, old accessory.
Okay.
That's why I'm gonna do it and we open Monday to Saturday.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Two, do we have the mailings?
Yes, we do.
In that case, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone present wishing to address this application, please step forward. Anyone from the board, any questions, comments, or concerns? I'll go back to the public one more time. Anyone here wishing to address this application, please step forward. No one coming forward, I will close the public hearing. I need a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Brito, Ms. Witt, discussion, roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Brito?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Dupree?
Yes.
And I vote yes. I'm gonna move on to the resolution.
Going back to the board for any follow-up questions?
Yeah, any questions? Just so you know too, because Mr. Martinez and Mr. Guadere are not here this evening, we have quizzed them and they are on board with all of tonight's applications. They've done their reviews, they've done their inspections, and they notified us that they're all okay with our agenda tonight, just, all right?
As a blanket statement.
Yep. So any more, any other questions, concerns from the board? All right? Then I'll move on to the resolution for 203 to 209 Dulson Avenue, phone retail, phone repair. I need a motion for the, Mr. Brito, I need a second, Ms. Witt, discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Brito?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Dupree?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you very much, sir, good luck.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Daniel Noel Ortiz. 67 North Street Tattoo Shop and Retail. How you doing, gentlemen?
How you doing?
Please state your names for the record.
Daniel Noel Ortiz.
Liam Larusa.
Great. What do you intend on doing?
Pretty much we're a tattoo shop, but we'll also be showcasing our art as artists on the walls. I guess that would be like the gallery part.
Okay.
And pretty much, we just wanna bring like a live, nice community of artists to the community.
Fantastic. Ms. Two, do we have the mailings?
Yes, we do.
Then I'll open the public hearing. Anyone here wishing to address this application, please step forward. Ms. Two, do we have anything in the mail, any mailings, any, I think in writing, anything on the telephone? Nothing. Okay. I'll go, anyone else from the public wishing to address this? I'll go to the board for any comments, questions, and concerns. Mr. Brito?
I have two questions. Could you be more specific about what exactly will be for sale and will you be providing or selling any food or drink?
There'll be no food or drinks, there'll be art on the walls and merchandise with our logo.
What is your logo?
It's, you know how the Nintendo sign looks? It's kinda like that, but it says nerd life tattoo.
What does it say?
Nerd life tattoo.
Nerd life?
Life tattoo. Cool.
Anyone else from the board? We'll go back to the public.
Wait.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Madden.
Will you be having art shows and like large gatherings of people?
Not large gatherings, but we would showcase our art here and there for like the public to come in and view.
Anyone else from the board? Yes, Mr. McCormick?
Does that affect their ability in terms of occupancy and fire rating capacity?
The occupancy will be determined by Middletown Fire Department.
But it's not considered a public event space if they're having a gallery?
Yeah, well, you wouldn't be having a gallery. That's not what the application seeks. You're putting up art for people to see, but you're not putting it out as come look at the art.
Are people allowed to come in and view though? Like, so, like, let's say one of our artists puts up their art and they would like to sell it, obviously.
Yep.
Would the public, they would come in and do a public viewing?
Of course, the public can always come in, but you can't advertise it as a mixer for a, the public to come in all at one time.
Right, we wouldn't have like a certain setting to where we would have people come in, it would just be like as they come type of setting.
And that would be fine.
Yeah.
Would either way, they still be governed by the amount of people they could have by?
At all times, yes.
Doesn't matter what the use is for? That number is still the same?
That's correct.
They are not a place of assembly. That's why I think you're getting that.
Correct.
Correct. People stopping in, look at his art, might want to purchase, maybe not, get a tattoo, whatever. Yep. And I believe that's the way the resolution reads. Okay. Back to the public. Anyone wishing to address this application, please step forward. No one coming forward, gonna close the public hearing. I need a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Madden, Mr. Brito, discussion, roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Brito?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Dupree?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, that being said, public hearing is closed. I will give the board one more chance, questions, comments, concerns? Okey-dokey.
Actually, I do have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can, to any degree, can it be opened for a small gallery-type gathering? Or would that require an amendment to the application?
No, they, well, they could apply for a special use from the city. Otherwise, they would have to come back with an amended site plan for an application.
Okay.
Would that be a permit from the DPW?
Yep.
That might be a good idea to draw in for a business.
Would those be like a one-day temporary or would it be like, oh, I have to apply for a permanent?
One-day temporary.
So if someone, so if we wanted to do a gallery, we'd apply for a one-day temporary gallery?
Yeah, yes.
Does the DPW have such a permit? I see your face.
Well, that's like.
Such a permit like that I don't know exists in the city.
So we're not allowed to showcase our art or like, 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 let's say we wanted to have a night where the public would come in and see my artist's artwork. We have beautiful artists that work with us.
I'm sure you do, but.
They would definitely like to showcase our art and our space is definitely big enough to do so. So would they be able to do that or do we deem a one-day permit for that?
Well, you would have to check with DPW if there is such a thing as a one-day permit. Otherwise, no. Your application is not, that you presented to the planning board is not for that.
Even with this in tattoo gallery, it could be the walls.
You can have, when people come in, when you're open, they can certainly look at whatever artist, and if 10 people are there and that's what the building department says or the fire inspector says is your CEO, those 10 people are allowed to be there.
Those, we're staying up to capacity levels, we're good?
Well, as long as it's not an advertised event.
Advertised, so how, so how would I be able to advertise if I wanna showcase my artist's work?
You would, you would have to come back and seek an amended site plan for it.
Amended site plan, how so? So I have to apply for a gallery?
Yep.
Other than that, we could do a one-day, we could do a one-day.
No, I'm not saying that you can, you would have to check with the building department.
Does the building department have anything that would allow us to do a one-day event?
They're not here tonight, but probably not.
I don't believe they do. I, I'm, I also work for the city and I don't believe that they're, I'm on. I don't believe that they're, most of those types of permits would come out of my office and I don't think that there is something specifically for that. I think what they're trying to say is we're not opposed to what you want to do, but it's important that your application reflects what you're doing in its totality.
So for now, we would be okay for like the tattooing and the selling of art, but just not an assembly? But we can come back in and apply to do so?
Yeah, you would have to have an amended site plan, we'd have to see if parking and all the other necessities that we may require.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We've already closed the public hearing and we've gone to the board and now I'm gonna call for the resolution for Daniel Noel Ortiz, 63 to 67 North Street, a tattoo shop and retail, no food or drink, okay? It's all in the resolution. I need a motion. Mr. Madden, I need a second. Mr. Brito, discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Brito?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Dupree?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Carla Ramos Morello, 228 Wickham Avenue, an office. Good evening.
Hi.
Please state your name for the record and what you intend on doing.
Carla Ramos Morello and I'm trying to open a tax preparation service firm there.
Great. All right. Ms. Two, do we have the mailings? Open the public hearing. Ms. Two, do we have anything in writing? Anyone on the phone? Okay, I'll go to the public. Anyone wishing to address this application, please step forward. None coming forward, we'll go to the board for any questions, comments, or concerns. Yes, Mr. Madden?
If its current use is residential, does it need a zoning change or no?
No, it does not. It meets the criteria for business also, offices.
Permitted use.
Yep, permitted use. Anything else from the board? I'll go back to the public hearing. Anyone wishing to address this application, please step forward. No one coming forward, I'm going to close the public hearing. I have a motion from Mr. Brito. I have a second from Ms. Witt. Discussion. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Brito?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Dupree?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, board, one more time, any questions, comments, or concerns?
Parking, there's two spaces provided, this is not in the DMU, so it's not automatically waived. Do we know how many employees will be working at any given time and how many clients could be there?
Well, we only work by appointments and I only have one employee. So like, like I said, I know so I own like a, the location at 24 Llan Avenue, so if they wanna like, you know, it's very close to 228 Wickham, so if they wanna park, they can park there too. They can use that parking space.
And I believe she was very cautious about her parking. She really has a little bit more than that, but she was very honest and put two parking spaces in. Anyone else? I'm gonna go to the resolution for 228 Wickham Avenue, an office. Okay, I need a motion for the resolution. Ms. Witt, I need a second. Ms. Dupree, discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Brito?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Dupree?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is HV Business Link LLC, 28 North Street, office. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
State your name for the record, please.
I'm Barbara Martinez and I'm the owner of HV Business Link at 28 North Street. HV Business Link is going to be a client-based, member-based, small business, social media management, support office with some collaborative workspace for any small business that needs to have the space to conduct business for their small business.
Ms. Two, do we have the mailings?
Yes.
Okay. Then I'm gonna open the public hearing. Ms. Two, do we have anything in writing? Anyone on the phone? I'm gonna go to the public. Anyone wishing to address this application, please step forward. None coming forward, I'll go to the board for any questions, comments, or concerns. Mr. McCormick?
Thank you, Ms. Martinez, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thanks. I happened to be on Facebook earlier this week and I did see your advertisement for the upcoming opening of the business.
Yes.
And when I looked at your resolution this evening, some of the stuff that you had posted on Facebook didn't seem to jive with what was in the resolution itself.
Okay.
You had mentioned that there was mixers.
Mini mixers.
Mini mixers. But the resolution says that you're not approved for eating and drinking.
I don't know what that means.
So if you're having, my experience has been mixers usually have food and drink and that's not an approved use according to your resolution this evening?
Okay, so, so I can have a mixer but not feed people?
Again, that's, this goes back to what we were talking about earlier about you're, you're on here for an office, but some of your advertisements make it seem like it's more of a public assembly place, cause I know you did mention about workshops for, I didn't wanna, informational workshops and mini mixers, which would go outside the scope of my understanding of what she's being approved for, correct?
Correct.
So I just wanna make sure that whatever we're approving you for and whatever you're looking for, we're on the same page.
Okay.
Just like the gallery, you know.
I'm trying, so on my application, it doesn't state mini mixers and it doesn't state?
But again, goes back to the, what's in the resolution says no food or drink and it's not a public event space, it's, you're on mostly as an office, am I correct? Am I reading this correctly?
That's correct.
Okay.
So I just, so are you aware and that's where we are?
Okay, so in order for me to provide appetizers at the event, at the mini mixer for my clients, what do I need?
Eating and drinking.
Eating and drinking.
I mean, your, your application says business consultation consisting of marketing, promotion, administrative, and related services.
Right.
Nothing about mixers, nothing about providing food, and we need to know that or else. We're taking you just solely at your word when we read this.
Okay, so what do you need from me in order for me to get that amended?
We would need an application stating exactly what you wanna do.
Okay.
Amended site plan.
You'd have to come back.
And amend the application.
All right.
For what your intended use would be.
Okay, so for now, what I have is my office for the collaborative workspace and consulting.
Correct.
Yes.
That's fine.
Right. Okay, did I answer your question?
Yep. Like I said, I just wanna make sure.
Sure.
That's fine. Any other board members, questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, I'll go back to the public one more time. Anyone wishing to address this application, please step forward. No one coming forward, go to the board, close the public hearing. I need a, I need a motion, Mr. Madden, I need a second, Ms. Witt, discussion, roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Brito?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Dupree?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Now, for the resolution for 28 North Street, office, I will need a motion for the resolution. Ms. Witt, second, Mr. Brito, discussion, roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Brito?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Dupree?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Good luck.
Thank you, have a good night, everyone.
You too. Next on the agenda, Orange County Real Estate LLC, 238 Wickham Avenue, appliance store. Good evening. Please state your name for the record.
Dailin and last name B U N.
Okay, what do you plan on doing?
Retail store, appliances, open box.
Open what?
Box, yes.
She say bar?
Box, B O X.
Oh.
Open boxes.
Open boxes.
Thank you, I just misunderstood you. I was gonna say, yeah, okay, that's a, that's a new viewpoint.
We're all on our way, open bar.
Sounds like a unanimous vote, anyway, I'm sorry. I apologize. Ms. Two, do we have the mailings?
Yes, we do.
Okay, that's great, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Anyone from the public wishing to address this application, please step forward. Ms. Two, do we have anything in writing?
Anything in writing.
Anyone on the phone?
No.
Great. Okay, I'll go to the board. Questions, comments, or concerns? Yes, Ms. Witt?
I just have a quick question. When I was looking up the exact address on Google Maps, it was showing me in between the gas station and where the piano store used to be, but it wasn't showing me exactly 238.
It's the piano store.
It is the piano store, okay, cause it was showing 237 and I'm like, okay, well, where is it going to be? Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board? I'll go back to the public. Anyone from the public wishing to address this application, please step forward. None coming forward, I'm gonna ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Brito, Ms. Witt, second, discussion, roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Brito?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Dupree?
Yes.
I vote yes. And of course, I'll go back to the board for any other questions or comments. All right, none being had, we're going for the resolution on 238 Wickham Avenue, an appliance store. I need a motion. Ms. Witt, and I need a second. Ms. Dupree, discussion, roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Brito?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Dupree?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Good luck.
Thank you.
That concludes our regular agenda. We do have some preliminary people here this evening. 33 Mulberry Street, a commercial and residential complex. They are here for preliminary, they've been here previously, we've had some meetings with them and review of plans and how they are going to run the project, and we'd like to present it to the board as we think it's fit and ready to start moving forward. But this is a prelim.
My name is Ryan Felonzer with Felonzer Engineering, here to present the application for 33 Mulberry behalf of Troldale. So we were actually here before the board last, I believe, March 5th meeting of this year, where we introduced it then. I'm happy to be reintroducing it to you now. We've made a few slight changes to this site plan. So just a quick background, this is a mixed-use proposed project at 33 Mulberry for commercial and residential apartments. When we previously presented the project, we had about 100 units shown. We're currently proposing 98. You'll also notice that the site plan, we previously showed spaces designated for compact car space, parking, which is slightly smaller than the city code. We have now removed those designations and all parking on-site will be the minimum per city code, nine by 18. The west building that we're designating right here on the plan, which is hard to see, but it borders Mulberry Street, this whole portion here is going to be first floor commercial. Previously, we had a mix of residential on the first floor, but the first floor will now be all commercial. And Patrick here has some renderings if you wanna take a look at the layout in detail. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Uh, and that, uh, part of the building's about 4,600 square feet. What we've also done is started to enhance our design, provide more detail on the site plan. So we've added some proposed utility connections. We have a proposed landscaping plan. We added a lighting plan, revised the grading plan as well. And we've shown some pedestrian improvements, sidewalks, signage for traffic. And we also have a recreation area as well. So the parking for the site, we have an updated calculation as well. So now that we have 98 units, a little bit less, we've updated a, updated the parking calculation. So what we are currently proposing with the 98 units is per the code, per requirement. So a one-bedroom is 1.75 spaces per dwelling unit, two spaces per two-bedroom dwelling unit. So we have 74 one-bedrooms, 24 two-bedrooms. That's a total of 178 spaces. That's separate from the commercial. So when we calculate the commercial, we're designating on the plan that it's for future office use. So the office is tied to the one per 300 for your parking calculation in your code. So that's 16 spaces there. So the total minimum required is 194 when you add those two together. And what we're proposing is 196.
Where is that? What drawing has the 196 on it?
That'll be here, the C 101. Sorry, so that's not in the set that Patrick just distributed. This set I brought with me tonight. And the board is certainly welcome to come up and take a look, and I can leave the set with you as well. So we're happy to get comments, questions from the board.
Sure, go ahead.
Hi, I was here at the March meeting, and I remember you talking vaguely about having a mixed-use space for the public, for a computer lab or something like for either residents there or for the public. Is that still within the plan, or is that?
So right now, that space which was designated in the commercial area, we're just designating that right now for future tenant use for office only. Because that's tied to the parking. There's different, the different uses have the different parking requirements. Right now, we're anticipating office space. And when tenants are lined up in the future, we anticipate reapproaching the board for those planning board approvals based on what they actually secure.
Thank you. And then one other question I remember. You were talking about, at the time, getting your historical landmark designation. Had that gone through yet?
Sure, and I'm gonna let Patrick talk, speak to Shippo.
Sorry, I didn't want to rock the boat.
Yeah, yeah, hi. Patrick Chaconi, I'm the historic consultant on the project. So the building is eligible for the National Register. We have preliminary approval from, from the state on that. The design is, we've had extensive consultation on the design. There's, we still need a final approval from the National Park Service based on some of the iterations. We're obviously deferring to the, the planning board and working out these issues as far as unit count, overall building configuration before we, we fine-tune it. And again, as at that March meeting, there's other, other things we'll also need to go over with ARB, including the exterior appearance of the building. We still need to see if it's possible to easily, for example, strip the white paint off the building, leave, leave the brick in place, which we believe, but it's something we need to test. Those are things we'll also go over with the ARB, since the ARB also has oversight of, of this project.
Any other questions?
Can you just give general numbers as far as square footage of the entire project, and how much is residential and how much is commercial?
Sure, and for that, I'll call on our architect, Mr. John Soraco.
Good evening. You know, maybe I should get my board.
You want this?
Yeah. We're calling this, this is Mulberry.
Sir, can you use the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
We're calling this, this is Mulberry.
Sir, can you use the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. This is Mulberry on the top, Fulton's on the right, and Wa'waiyanda's on the bottom here. This is the commercial building that we're talking about. It's at the, in the middle of Mulberry Street here. And this is about, so we have 1,300, 1,300, and 1,900 square feet, 26. It's about 4,500 square feet of commercial. And there are residential, there are two floors of residential above this portion of the commercial building.
And the scope of the entire project?
The, the entire project is with the parking garage, no, I'm sorry, the, without the parking garage, is 168,000, of, of which this is 4,500. And then the parking garage is another 65,000 square feet.
Thank you.
Sure. Um, maybe I should just point out what we're presenting differently architecturally since our March hearing. We did, we did have units in this portion of the west building, and those have been removed. That's how we, our unit count came down to 98. And then we made some modifications to the parking garage in order to eliminate any compact spaces, which brought our parking count slightly also that Ryan spoke about. Apart from, apart from those changes, the, the overall project remains the same. And I'm not sure I should walk the board through the project again. But, but there were no changes that would require us to go back to Mr. Martinez, or I don't believe any changes that would go back to Mr. Martinez. So all the discussions I had with him and the fire inspector, I, I believe are still, are still valid conversation.
Yes, I think they were resolved with you?
Yeah.
Okay, right, and that, that area you see of the commercial, that's where the planning board waived the residential requirements and the commercial requirements. That's what they had to meet in order to move forward. They've already met the square footage requirements in order to move forward. So, and the parking now is now been met. So we're moving forward on this. The only thing we, we had, we did have a question that came up later.
Sure.
And I'm sure it'll be, come up once you present your plans, we send it to our engineer. Is that the, as far as we get ready to do your long-form EAF, are you in the floodway in any, in any way, shape, or form?
Yeah, Ryan, I think you should.
Yeah, so the FEMA map on, for this parcel, and for a lot of Fulton Street on that side, is in the 100-year floodplain. And the code does, has some stipulations for the requirements for development in a floodplain, which we fully intend to meet. And as we, you know, develop the plans and work with CPL or the city's engineer, we'll certainly address that. The main issue that we want to address is the first floor elevation. Obviously, you want that to be above the floodplain level, which we are proposing that currently. And there's also some stipulation in the city code that allows for any deviation below, two foot above the floodplain if you have certain mitigation levels applied to your foundation design, which we intend to do as well.
And Ryan, it's the, it's the plain. It's nothing's in the, the actual way.
So there's no, right, it's not, you know, sitting in the, I'll say, regulated floodway. It's, it's just in the.
I only mention it because CPL mentioned it to us. So when you get ready to do your presentate, or your final, and CPL, give it to CPL, make sure you looked at it and at least dressed it, addressed it.
Yep, and then obviously stormwater is going to be something that we'll be focusing on as well. So we plan on doing a full stormwater pollution prevention plan for this. HydroCAD calculations to satisfy the state requirement for that.
Yes, Mr. Madden.
I believe you addressed this in March, and I just, would you go over again the traffic flow in and out of your parking garage?
Sure, so you can probably see it on the, your rendering that we passed out. This will be good for now. So we're proposing the, so the top floor of the parking garage, access to that will be from Wa'waiyanda only. So if you look in the upper left-hand corner, we're proposing a ramp that will drive up to the top level. We're gonna, there's gonna be some grading involved on the site where we're going to lower it slightly so we could have the parking level not so high up, that second level. So there isn't a very steep grade. All grades were gonna be 10% or below. I believe we ironed this out to be around 3%. It looks fairly more dramatic on the, on the rendering here, but we'll make sure that's an approachable level. So for the lower level, the existing entrance off of Mulberry, which is tucked behind this building here. So on the site plan, which I will provide officially in a future submission, we have a two-way entrance here. I can try to see where my finger is there. That's where the current entrance and exit is. That's where the lower level of the area will be accessed.
And then the upper level will be two-way off of Wa'waiyanda, you know, no restrictions, right, left?
Correct, two-way off of Wa'waiyanda.
What do you propose on the interior of the project?
Uh, interior of the residences, or?
The courtyard.
Courtyard. So right now, what we're showing is grass area. So again, on the site plan, we have what we call a grass recreation area. So a combination of hardscaping, grass, and then we dedicate a playground. We have a playground that 30 by 30-foot right now for a swing set, some picnic tables that we're planning on having, some bench, park benches around there, just for an area for the residents to be able to exit and lounge outside.
Yes.
Are you proposing market-rate apartments?
So can I pass that to Patrick or John?
Yeah, I think at this point, it's 100%, 100% market-rate apartments in them.
Anyone else? Okay. I think we're gonna ready, get ready to start the process, bring plans, updated plans. We'll send them to CPL. If he has any questions, obviously he will have.
I do have one question, and it might be slightly early in the process, but I'd like to ask it anyway. Is it possible, or is it appropriate tonight for the board to declare their intent to be lead agent yet?
We have to have a public hearing to do that. That's what we'll do next month. We plan on doing that.
Okay.
We had that discussion, but I can't do it without a public hearing.
Understood. Thank you.
So, yes, next, next month, whether we have everything ironed out with CPL or not, we think we're on our way. Everything's, looks like it's falling into place. We will declare our intent to be lead agency at a public hearing.
Thank you very much.
Anything else from the board before these gentlemen pack up? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
I'll be right back.
He's, he's, he's double duty tonight.
Okay, last but not least, again, for the board, my name is Ryan Felonzer with Felonzer Engineering, representing Dreamfields Brands. With me tonight is Mr. Dan Burchard. He's the National Expansion Director.
If you just give me just a moment.
Sure.
Look, I don't think it made it onto everyone's agenda. This is 55 Midland Avenue.
Extension.
Yeah, did it get on the agenda? All right, just in case. Some people didn't get it. All right.
Gotcha.
Sorry, Ryan.
No problem. Thank you, sir. As the chairman mentioned, it's at 55 Midland Avenue Extension in the I-2 zone. It's about a 3.8 acre total parcel. That's split between two municipalities, actually. It's kind of unique. So majority of the parcels in the city of Middletown, and the other portions in the town of Walk Hill. And I will mention that we did reach out to the town of Walk Hill and, and let them know that we are in front of the board or seeking site plan approval from the board. And they did place us on a work session meeting for next week. So our intent administratively would be to request the board take lead agent on this, as has been done similarly on, for this parcel in the past. But I will obviously report back when we have our meeting with Mr. Lake and Mr. Weeks with McGevey, Hauser, and Hitzel next week. The applicant is proposing to utilize the existing building for his cannabis package and distribution company. There will be no retail proposed for this, strictly warehouse, package, distribution. We currently are proposing, we have 30 parking spaces. So the proposed park, employee count right now is about 60 employees. Be 30 per shift over two shifts. So with 60 employees per your zoning code, we have one space per two employees. So we have 30 parking spaces designated in the rear of the property. So planned right of your set here. We've also designated some of the existing handicap spaces onsite to remain. So we have your ADA parking at the front of the main entrance. The main ingress and egress of the property is on the city of Middletown side. So that's why we were proposing that the city act as lead agent when that time comes. No high pile storage is proposed for the interior. I know that was a concern from DPW. We talked about that at our pre-application meeting. So that's not proposed. I believe deliveries are minimal at a couple of box trucks per day, if I'm not mistaken.
Could you please come to the microphone?
I'll introduce Dan Burchard here.
Hi, I'm Dan Burchard. So as far as trucks coming in and out, there would be, we have a 26-foot internal box truck. And, you know, that would go out a couple of times a week in, for the first stage of this. And once we're in manufacturing or producing, then that would go away, and it would just be a semi coming a couple of times a month, and then just vans leaving out to make deliveries to retailers. So once we're in full, you know, you know, end stage, there'll be just a couple of semis a month coming in.
Ms. Witt?
So how many box trucks would be going in and out once you're up and running?
So, I don't want to confuse this, but initially, we're gonna be using it as a warehouse once we have, you know, use permit and CFO. Then there's the, there's a construction project to get through to, to build out the rest of the building for manufacturing or for packaging. So when we're in the first stage where we're just using it as a warehouse and office, there'll be a box truck a couple of times a week coming in and out, one box truck. And there'll be a semi coming in a couple of times a month to drop off raw materials. No cannabis at all at that, at that stage. Once we've, we're done our construction, we've, you know, completed that, we move manufacturing into the building, that 26-foot box truck goes away, and then it's just the raw materials coming in and vans leaving with deliveries for retailers that leave in the morning and come back at night. So roughly two or three vans would be onsite, and they would leave for the entire day and come back. So they'd have one, you know, one departure, one return.
Mr. Britto?
The traffic is in and out on Wisner. Is that my understanding? Take Midland out to Wisner is the main route?
Correct.
Okay, I have a really silly question. Really, what are you doing?
Sure. What our company does is we're a, a product manufacturer. So picture M&amp;M's. M&amp;M's buys chocolate. They bring it in, they, they make, they, you know, mix it the way they like it. They then package it in their cool yellow packaging, or black packaging, or whatever it is. And then they sell it to retail. We buy local cannabis from the different farms around the state, licensed cannabis. We bring it in, we test it ourselves, even though it's a requirement of the state that has to come tested to us. We test it again because we want to protect our consumers. And we want to protect the money that's going on the floor when we go and build, you know, a bunch of product. So we, we take that product, we would then turn it into pre-roll joints, or, or, we call them jeters, and package them, and then put them in case packaging and sell them. So basically, we're a pre-roll manufacturer. Does that make sense?
Ms. Witt?
I just have a question. So in the city of Middletown, we have an ordinance that no, we're not, you're not allowed to have selling of cannabis. So since this is a mixed use, you know, where a part of it is in the city of Middletown and part of it is in town of Walk Hill, how does that play as far as the zoning and the whole, the whole structure of this whole project?
We're a lead agency. We control that. Does that answer your question?
No, it doesn't answer my question. My question is, is that?
It falls under pharmaceutical use, which is permitted.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Okay. And I have another question.
Sure.
Smell, odors. Sooner or later, I mean, it's, it's an industrial area, but you are a but to a residential area.
Yep, we take that very seriously. So we maintain the air and the, the environment in there through carbon scrubbers and several other filters. But the carbon scrubber is the most important one because that actually cleans the air in the room, and it removes the smell. All of our HVAC systems do not blow air out of the facility. They recirculate the air within it. Obviously, that I couldn't, couldn't get into detail. That's the engineers, you know, mechanical engineers piece. But, you know, we, we've, we have facilities in places that are much closer to, like where you can see a, you know, someone's house from it, and we've never had a complaint from any of the municipalities that we've been in other states. So we're very confident that we won't become a nuisance as far as smell goes.
Okay.
And, and our biggest facility, which is in California, I think it smells like fruit outside because of the, there's, there's natural terpenes that go into these joints. And the, the only smell I've ever smelled is like a little bit of strawberry outside.
Okay, thank you.
Is there security?
Yes, we have 24-hour security. So another thing we take very seriously is our safety, health and safety of our employees. We have a very robust security plan, which requires 24-hour security with 24-hour national monitoring. And then backed up by alarm systems and panic buttons. So if somebody's in trouble, somebody tries to rob us, something to that effect, there's, there's an actual button, a silent alarm on the wall in very. an actual button to silent alarm on the wall in very, you know, particular areas that would be, you know, that are, you know, strategic. We do require everybody that enters and exits the building to be searched unless they are a government official or a state official. And so that means people walk, basically just like an airport. Nobody's taking their shoes or belt off, but they're walking through a metal detector. And if they go off, they'll get wanted. That's to protect our employees from, you know, workplace violence, and it's just our standard. And obviously, we also don't want people stealing from us because it is a desirable thing to steal, and it is a requirement for us to report that. So, you know, very, very seriously taken. And that's an internal team, and again, it is 24 hours.
And will it be enclosed by a fence or...
It is already, the facility is already enclosed by two fences. There's one on the complete perimeter, and there's one right at the edge of the building as well.
Yes, Mr. McCormick.
Can you talk a little bit about the workforce that you'll need and what the pay rate will be and what we should expect?
Yep. We have jobs that range from about $20 an hour on the service level, and that's probably, you know, if you count the whole count, probably about 40, 40 people roughly, give or take. And then we have leadership roles that are in the like $65,000 a year range, and then we have high leadership roles such as general manager that are in the six figures.
Going back to what Gretchen was asking, in your response, Mr. Krogan, about it being a pharmaceutical use, I think the question is, will they have the ability on the Walk Hill side of their property to retail-sell their products? If the property is split between the City of Middletown, which does not allow sale of cannabis, and the Town of Walk Hill, which does, can they sell their product on the Walk Hill side?
I would say no.
Thank you, Mr. Madden.
Can I just speak on that real quick?
Please.
We don't sell to the public. We only, and we don't have a license to. Our license only allows us to wholesale it to other licensed retailers. So our vans leave there with people's orders that are typically almost a pallet worth that'll go to a retail store, they'll intake it, they sell it to the public. We at no time have ever or will ever sell to the public directly.
Perfect. Thank you. And a second question, how, the existing structure is how large?
It's about 33,000 square feet.
And you're not proposing making that any larger, or is that...
No, it's to remain as is. We're not proposing any external or site modifications other than striping for the parking.
Thank you.
Cleaning it up. We could use some paint and some stucco repair, which is something I'm looking to do.
Right, you'll have to supply a rendering discussion we had eventually.
Yeah, so we'll give you guys a nice rendering of what it would look like from the front.
That's fine. Yes, Mr. McCormick?
What is your proposed timeline?
We would like, I mean, the, from CUP, which I expect probably in the next 60 days, I assume, I mean, give or take, but that seems like a reasonable amount of time from here without any resistance. And then I have, we're going into engineering right now, so currently the CADs are being finished and approved, and those are going over to the engineering firm in the next few weeks. We expect that to take about 45 days, so it'll be fairly in line with when the CUP comes in, and then we'll start the review process with the city on our full deck.
Got you.
We believe it's probably a four-month build-out, so I don't see us being operational till next, like late, late Q1 with the current timing right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have the approval from the state already?
Yes, we're actually operating in the state already. We amended our license to add a spot in Peak Skill, so we've opened a space there, which is why we're, we're looking to get our CFO, once this use permit is done, use the building as it's currently intended, which is warehousing and office space while we do the build-out over the next year so we can use it for warehousing and office to support our other activities.
How many other locations do you have?
In New York, none. Across the country, multiple.
I thought you said you had one in Peak Skill.
We do, just the one. Yep.
Fantastic. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us. Appreciate it.
Okay, motion to adjourn. Mr. Brito, second, Mr. McCormick, all in favor?